I don't know, do we?
So let's leave it on ninety-four degrees. That can vex out right now. This time we'll call the meeting in the Jackson County for the supervisors to order. Before we have Todd come up, we need to amend the agenda to include fireworks permit for the old pressures in Miles. So that would be under the Wans portion of the agenda. Yeah.
I think it's supposed to amend the agenda as mentioned.
Second, motion and second to amend the agenda to include the directors fireworks permit. All those in favor. Motion carry. Now, we're going to be joined by Todd Kenny, our interim Jackson County engineer.
Morning, Todd.
Good morning.
So on the agenda is the resolution to send the original resolution from two thousand nineteen on five hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue. Basically to move the class seats farther north on five hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue. So that was, Robert was originally all Class B, and then the gates were established at about, I think it's around thirteen hundred feet north of the intersection with sixty-four. And then this would move it up another about a thousand feet, twenty-three hundred feet north of that intersection. So the gates would just move up north.
Move north. At least it's had the same turnaround for our radar system or greater operator.
So it's, well, it's the class of the remaining room is still fifty, it's just the gates. The level B section will be longer than the big gates for the seat.
As I said, we wrote that last week.
Yeah.
I would make that motion to.
But, uh.
Second. With gates, change of transition. Your motion is to approve the resolution.
The resolution changing by way of any course. It says oh seven oh five twenty twenty-two, but no.
Would you call it shortly?
Okay.
Let's see what resolution we're looking at before it passes. Because it's been presented, but it does not have a number.
So.
Charlie, do you have a number?
We're rescinding the other number. We have the number to the other.
So what we're trying to do now from here on out is when it comes to resolutions and
Get rid of the president.
You want to rescind the previous.
Thank you.
So we get rid of it.
Yes.
And we get a whole new resolution, so there's no.
Nine fifteen, so we're gonna have a paper.
All right.
Thank you.
How's that motion with those that resolution number?
Thanks. Second. And if you prove it discussion, all those in favor. All right, I motion carry.
That's a question that's only if Mike or Stacy, they're putting, making sure they had it.
So it's not for our resolution case. They will not sign when you have the front of you. It'll get put on resolution paper.
So if Stacy prepares this, it gives it to the way she needs to have this number already.
She needs to, she needs to, with Shelley to get the correct number. It's, you know, it sometimes could be because of the holiday.
Okay. And part of the resolution is to rescind.
It is.
Yeah.
Anybody of this new resolution is to rescind. The old number seven eleven or nine dash ten dash twenty nineteen. Yep.
Hey, anything else from you, Todd?
I'll be back here too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We want to call our lead until we're ready. If she should get down here right now, we could get her taken in and out in just seconds. Hi, can our lead be down here in a minute? Okay. All right. Thanks. Guess what could reset this to become?
Reporter.
Good morning.
Between John and I, Arlene Chau, Jackson County reporter. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm here to present our fiscal year end report, which Lisa has my June report, which she'll do later evidently. So it's kind of the wrong order, but anyway.
I just like.
It is. So you have a copy of it. And the first page, of course, tells you the money we took in that stays with the county of one hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. It's a little bit down from last year. Mostly due to, I think, reported documents. Other organs that we're seeing coming in, for example, also have fewer pages to some. And then on the second page, the state total that we took in from the different state agencies. It's five hundred and seven dollars, or excuse me, five hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Which for the state is an increase of almost a hundred thousand. Seventy thousand. Really more than seventy thousand is for the vote registration fees, because it's a regular year.
Oh, so, okay.
So that kind of explains that. So the total for the year was, our revenue was six hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Third page is just a different breakdown showing fees in a different format. And then the fourth page, it's the fourth page for you that has red highlight on it. Anyway, it's just the income totals for the fiscal year, so it's like in an office again. And then, of course, your cash report, which is again is a different way to look at the piece that we brought in. Any questions? Passports were up by sixty-eight hundred, which was good. People starting to travel again. So.
If they can get a plane ticket.
Well, yeah. The better fact. So. All right.
Motion to accept the report. Not authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second. Second. All those in favor.
All right.
I motion carry.
Okay. And just really quick on the OHV law that changed in July, I do have more information in my office for anyone who would like to stop in and pick that up. Clarification until we get the county or. And here's the original, so. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
You too. I guess. Lillian, do you want to?
Sure. Calendar for this week. Three o'clock this afternoon is a green space redevelopment meeting for Larry. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July sixth, at six P M. It's a E nine one one service board meeting for Mike. Thursday, July seventh, at nine A M. Is Preston's meeting. Where their urban renewal plan amendment is going to be discussed if any of you want to attend that. Friday, July eighth, at eight thirty is the webinar on our energy cost outlook for any of you who want to attend that. At ten A M. On Friday is seven judicial district meeting in Davenport for Larry. Monday, July eleventh, at six P M. Is the public hearing on Preston's urban renewal plan amendment, also in Preston. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July twelfth, at nine A M. That afternoon, Larry has a Mississippi Valley Cooketa River Watershed Management Authority executive meeting that's going to be in Del- Delhi now. Got that message, and it's at three o'clock, not at four, so it's an hour earlier than usual.
Three o'clock.
Just that starts. I didn't ask for what it was going to add. Also, at five o'clock that afternoon is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Meeting by Zoom for Jack. And you're actually, take today, I'm looking for a motion on a fireworks permit for the Great River Threshers that will be in Miles, and that will be on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
A motion and second to approve the firework permit for the Great Threshers, all those in favor.
The other business that I have on my agenda is discussion possible action on the Jackson County solar energy projects. That had McGriffin, and Brett McGriffin in here, and Chris Fisher in the top of that.
So they had said a detail to us then, I think everybody got that right about let them proceed to see what we can get for grants and such.
I think that, you know, that was what we discussed, and he was going to give us and get us, get us some information from what the study that the University of Iowa students come up with to. Because they were supposed to look at our buildings and let us know, to my knowledge, I haven't seen a report from them.
Oh, we had one for what they were questioning some of the numbers.
Bruce said the one number that he questioned, he said in the email, he gave you the new numbers for that, but I don't think anything changed for the rest of the case, just that one.
So do we want to proceed with them going to see what kind of funding we can get for that type of project? I mean, we're specifically talking about the jail project, right?
I don't see the harm in checking it out.
No, I don't think we got those getting the game yet, as far as that goes, and if they want to do the, the homework.
I agree.
Did you have that on the agenda for next week, did I see it? No, that was.
Or it's on the agenda for today.
No, but they had, I thought they were gonna give a report or something. Can we go ahead and give them a, to go ahead, do we need a motion to give them to go ahead and proceed with getting more detailed information of what's out there available for grants for us?
I think that's what we need.
I would make that motion to let it proceed. As they.
Basically informational, we need information on what kind of grants are available, and how we might apply for those grants. And if we're eligible for those grants.
I guess my other question about that is, is how does, what does M M E U have to say about this? Anything? Or what is there, you know, I mean, I don't know how they work with the why, I should say, I think they're under the same jurisdiction, correct, for M M E U? So I don't, I would think what M M E U policy is, but I would, you know, again, make that motion to let their proceed with their.
Which is the right name, so research.
Yeah, research, yeah.
Do we need them to draft the request or proposal, because you might need that before you start applying for grants, to know what the approximate amount was?
Just to give them, they have to do whatever they need.
Yeah. They can bring that to that, and I would write a note that now if you talk to them or send them an email that they check what they have to get. So we'll, ever. So, yeah.
Unless that's always considered limits. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure about that, so.
So going back to the fireworks permit, somebody brought my attention, it would be nice. Where they sell all these fireworks, if we get these permits there, so when they buy the bigger stuff, they can. Oh, we're in a middle, yeah, one for you. Okay, sorry.
Okay. Have you brought it forward to the vote?
No, we got, we were having discussion.
Okay.
So discussion's over, all those in favor.
I.
Motion carry.
All right. So the game here. So I'm just an idea that might help get it out there. I don't know how the vendors would feel about that, or.
You want me to be sending them copies of the permits?
I think it'd be nice to have a stack of a player, so when people buy that stuff, they know that you get it.
So they have to come to.
They have to come to the city. Application, not a permit. Application for.
The vendors that sell here in town, like either set up with places or Walmart, wherever they're set up, they have to come to the city to get a permit, right?
I think that's correct.
For temporary, temporary.
But the city doesn't require a permit, do they?
For fireworks?
Yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, the city has a permit process for having fireworks in the city.
Oh, okay.
I guess it would be, it would might be a worth our while to talk to the city to see when they issue a permit for a vendor. I think they have some confidence. For both sides, for the city and the county. You know, have them available at their stands to know, I mean. Geez, how many can you count, how many permits that were not out there?
And I would say.
There might have been a lot of noise going on. I just an idea that.
Yeah. Oh, and I have a conversation about ninety percent of people don't know they need a permit, or should have.
We need to do some publicity next year, let them.
The reason behind the permit is, I would say, is for department's emergency to know.
Safety factor.
What's going on.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? For me?
Do we have an R K A meeting tomorrow?
Nope. Okay.
It's running, I need a motion, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two work proceedings as written by Otter Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve second. We have a motion and a second to approve the publication of previous board meetings, men, that's all those in favor.
I.
I motion carry.
It's my understanding that there will be some additional claims coming, so for right now, I will skip over the approval of the claims, the warrants. I do need a motion to approve and authorize a handwritten mark two hundred and twenty-five dollars to replace a warrant to charity welding that was voided due to closed bank.
Oh, like here's a cover. And we got corrected, and you just got as much down.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How old is that?
Adjust.
Oh, okay. So moved.
A motion and second to replace a warrant two hundred and twenty-five dollars to Gerald Gerardi welding, all those in favor.
I.
I motion carry.
Motion needed to accept and place on file and authorize the signature of the county reporters' report fees collected for the month of June of twenty twenty-two to the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second. Second. Favor.
I.
Motion needed to approve invoices for five thousand three hundred and four dollars to Rick Wynder A I A, nine thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars ninety-two cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. Seventeen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars eighty-one cents to Kraus Plumbing and Heating. And forty thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents to Bill Bruce Builders for a total of seventy-three thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And authorized to chair signature of the project cost recap for the Law Enforcement Center.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Claims. Favor.
I, I just said, I was out there one day, and there were no, and in our warehouse, there are some plumbing supplies, so things are coming, are working on the temporary easement agreement with Mr. Spiegel. He's agreed to that, there is.
Back cut that slope.
Yeah, and go back into his parking lot and slope with the three to one, whatever it was that we can maintain it.
We have temporary power there yet. Contractor's going to show up before too long.
Say that. That ball is in John's game.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just wanted to give you an update. We are, we are verbally approved for these. I'll save us a retaining. Stupid, they took it away.
Need a motion to approve the chair's signature of the FY twenty twenty-three contract between the Jackson County Board of Supervisors and the four public libraries in the cities of Bellevue, Macoka, Preston, and Sevill, for a total of one hundred and two thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and ten cents.
Second. Motion and second to approve the contracts of the libraries in Jackson County, all those in favor.
All right. That's, that's a big headed budget for them, that's just to improve their hearing.
This is part of what the state of Iowa, Rob Sand, the moderator of state, is requiring us to do, which will go into my next item here. A motion needed to approve chair signature of the FY twenty twenty-three agreement with the Jackson County Tourist Association for a budget of forty thousand dollars. We have to have this on hand because we are not allowed to pay these fees without.
Not probably. So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
All okay.
I know. I, it's.
Very conversation.
I guess for discussion, one of the active members of the Tourism Association was talking about forty thousand dollars and wanting to know if we had any restrictions on how it could be spent. And I said, as far as I, I knew there was nothing as long as if, as long as it was for promotion and tourism. And.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, they have a board also, I guess, we trust that they make the right decisions, I don't know if they come back to us every time they fix something.
But I think the main purpose, main concern was with closing, possibly closing the Welcome Center and not having that facility there, which is, there's some expense to that. And was just curious as to whether we were going to this producer, is it Hobbit Shop that's down there, and some people, and the, the interpretive center, if they're going to kind of take over for a physical location for the Welcome Center, should some of that money be?
I would say it should be compensated, and it's taking up their sole space.
So that was a question that came about from the Tourism Association back to us. They did not like, I handed out the Jackson County Tours for your review, and under the terms and the service conditions, B. It says in the Jackson County Tourism Association shall oversee the Welcome Center property and building with association's personnel. Then C goes on to say, in exchange, the word supervisors shall provide forty thousand dollars in operational support. That is in this agreement. They wanted us to take that out, but at the time that this was sent out and, you know, discussed, they're still, correct me if I'm wrong, they're still in charge of the Welcome Center. Even though they're not opening it, correct?
Yes.
So that's why we said that had to stay in until they, we don't want her.
And then maybe we need to look at where they allocate their, the exposed promotion or parkage, whatever.
Oh, yeah, we could ask for a budget.
We usually need to, in percentage of budget, but of course, this year they didn't.
Well, this talk about operational support. So it says that in exchange, the supervisor shall provide forty thousand dollars in operational support. It doesn't say that you're gonna buy groceries or office space.
Right. Or billboard like they did, or some other social media things, you know, I think which were. I, I'll be honest with you, it seems to be worth it, because it seems feel like we have a lot of visitors. I know, I talked to several people in Belk, too, they just like coming there. The caves are really, I think, the way it sounds, and I've read a couple of different articles on that.
Now, they promote kind of a shallow, there's over seven hundred people there on Friday night, there's five hundred and something there on Tuesday night.
And you don't even hear about that, yeah.
Yeah.
You know. Unless you're following it like you do, I don't even know who's there.
Yeah, I guess people say, where's that?
Definitely.
Wow, I mean, they've been doing it for ten years now.
Yeah.
It's kind of, but I'm sure there's other things like trail rights and stuff that happen all the time, too, that I'm not aware of.
Yeah. I hear. I guess that's part of their, their promotion as far as events that are.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the resolution, all those in favor.
All right.
I motion carry.
Now, come back with a different amount for the plates.
Because I know we didn't talk about it, but with the Welcome Center, did we ever get that in place?
It should have happened this last week.
Maybe let's touch base with Alex, make sure we're, and we could try to move forward with that. I know we instructed already to get them, our pieces down here, but we have to move the rest of the stuff or put it on the market. How we're gonna do it, what we're gonna do. So I hate to say it, but this.
Put that conference table work anywhere in the jail, or did this?
I, I do not know. I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, it's very nice, chairs are all in one piece. Downstairs, it's mostly the antique stuff, upstairs, it's.
What do we do with that, see, Sparkle Society wants anything?
They don't have room for it. They absolutely do not have room for it.
Do we option it off, or what do we do with that?
I think we just have to talk to the Sparkle Society, or the Tourism Association and see if they have a need, or if they want to. We just have to make a decision after we talk to them about what we're gonna do with them.
We need to just take it somewhere, stuff in the corner for another ten.
Oh, we get that, we're gonna have somebody, you know, that needs or has a desire for some of that old desk or something, or. This is.
Go ahead, you need no desk.
We just need to keep moving forward with that facility.
Yeah, absolutely.
Summer going away.
Buggy again.
Well. Okay. At this point, we are going into work sessions. And then come back and approve the claims. You need action first before they go, yes, this is right. You showed it to Joe. Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh.
So. Becky Human Resource discussed possible action on actual, actuarial.
Actuarial service.
Actually, very. Service agreement.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And thank you for the state of Iowa for requiring us to do this.
Yeah.
So I have two service agreements for you today. The first one is for five oh nine A actuarial certifications that are required. Iowa public bodies that maintain self-insure healthcare plans for its employees are required to file a certification with the insurance division annually. We have used N I Heart to provide those certifications over the past, we had a two-year agreement that just expired after our last valuation of this year twenty-one. So I now have a new agreement for a two-year with N I Heart again to supply the services for this year twenty-two and twenty-three. So the amount of that two-year contract is two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Questions about that one, I would just ask for a motion to approve the two-year agreement with N I Heart to provide the five oh nine A actuarial certifications for this year twenty-two and twenty-three, and the amount two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
How does that compare to our last contract?
So we were at two thousand twenty-two fifty, last, for the two-year contract, twenty-two fifty, and now we're at twenty-six.
So what? Try to put some by.
We have motion and a second, all those in favor.
I.
And we as well are required to have an annual report and actuarial that valuation completed under the governmental accounting standard for Statement seventy-five. So the scope of this statement is to address accounting and financial reporting for other post-employment benefits that are provided to employees of state and local government employers. We use N I Heart for that service as well, we have the same two-year contract with them, which you can't, because it's expired. So I would ask for a motion to approve a new two-year group, N I Heart to provide the annual report and actuarial evaluations for this year twenty-two and twenty-three, as required under G A S and seventy-five, and the amount of six thousand four hundred dollars.
I'm checking.
Motion and second. All those in favor.
There are probably very few providers around, is that true?
This was recommended at state, I think this is the third two-year contracts which we had to do.
Go off to bed or up.
This company is very used to work for this. So that was all I had for action.
Coming back for work session?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me know.
It's time for recess. Interim Jackson County engineer Becky Human Resource, work session personnel and. Awards of missions. And it's since I lost meetings. I don't think anybody had too much this last week.
No, head transportation, I guess.
Yeah, I did think that.
Oh, yeah.
I thought we had a really good session with Leisure Link.
Oh, yeah.
I thought they were very receptive. They were interested in in our willingness to cooperate, you know? And I think there was just kind of some lack of communication between them and with us and, but I think some of the things that we ended up coming up with for suggestions. I haven't received anything yet from leisurely. Homeowners Association, but I'm sure we'll shortly and see if we can help get things straightened up here.
May discussion on who who has laws that cover different things and, I mean, their covenants for their property are different from some of the county laws, but some are the same. Both can be used together so to help, you know, clean up areas and zoning issues with businesses.
Well, they're breaking the ordinance of as far as businesses or private businesses, yeah.
Support each other, I suppose, you know? And it was good Sarah was there, so she had her legal input and I thought Lori did a really good job of coordinating it and getting things discussed, so. We'll see where we move from here.
I agree. So conservation, we talked about the interpreted center of the lake out there and a contract of hearing to do some work on it. Last fall, and he finally got there, it was dry, really going down, and we had a good weekend. Spruce Creek agreed to pay him five thousand dollars. Got about halfway down the thing, you know, what, for another five, we can go do the whole thing. So we took some out of Spruce Creek, we had about twenty-one thousand come in for the week. Some of that, and if you bought, look, they have reshaped that whole lake area, but about. Out of two or three fishing jetties out there and then I wouldn't say five or six islands. So they dug it deeper and pushed dirt up on top.
And they were doing that one time when I went by. Yeah, I kind of wondered what this trail tail coming.
Yeah.
And you said that was for fishing, so I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's just lower level to keep better fish. They did restock it with the old perch about two weeks ago, you know, a little pool was up there, so now the boards are going back and it started coming up, so they're making it really usable lake. There wasn't much in it for fish before.
So I had seen their coordination that put out, you know, as far as they'd have to do this every so often to get rid of the invasive species in these.
I know everybody.
Not any clean water or springs coming into there, so.
Everybody kept saying, I, what did they do? Don't worry, it'll be, it'll be back when it's, when they get a get a chance to get everything done, they make through.
Interesting, you're having trouble for walking, you can shoot, so probably be a motor rail out to the end of those. Walk right down to the water, see what's on.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
Is that, are you talking about Hurstville? Yeah, and I talked to Tony last week about, sorry, next week, yeah. They already stocked part of that though?
Yeah. Yellow perch.
Which?
There's just that little pool on the north side.
Oh, so they were able to do that, okay.
They did a fish kill on it last fall.
Yeah.
Or maybe early this spring, get rid of whatever else was in there.
Yeah, the cart.
Yeah. I think it was last fall.
And it's just gonna fill up naturally, right?
Hopefully, it got a little bit in there. Rain yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like we got rain all week, so.
Yeah. Start season. Water in there.
Here she is.
Smile. Just funny Jesus.
So I do have, Shelley just put in those few plates that had to get paid. I would like to have a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of five hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Will approve.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor?
Now, that's all that I have to report to.
So I did some tracking on fuel prices. Getting on the bills team, we're paying three dollars and cents a gallon for gas. And somewhere in between there, four seventeen and that was less. Bill was for four dollars thirty-eight cents, which makes a total of, it went up fifty-eight cents last month. For gas, diesel went four dollars a gallon up to. Four fifty-nine, went to four forty, most of them on four fifty-nine, yeah, another fifty-nine cents or piece on fifty-eight cents of gas.
Not gonna help anybody's budget.
I think we probably are. She probably usually is. She's now.
The energy district there.
I can see. Should say word recess. We're trying to, I keep getting, wait till we get that. We're joining with Todd Kenny, our interim Jackson County engineer. To discuss Friday things.
Okay.
Let you start.
So the first thing I'm gonna talk about is the safety policy we've been working on. I think Stacy had emailed it to. Yes, yeah.
We all had it.
Yeah, okay, so just a little background. This was something, I think, the last time I was here, we talked about trying to get put together, I think the safety committee had been meeting. But we hadn't really got to a safety policy yet. So one of the things. First meeting I sat in on from the safety committee from the road department was to open our efforts to get the safety policy done first, which would include a personal protective equipment, reassessment part of that. And then we would tackle some of the other policies like blackout, tag out, hascom, exclamation, that kind of thing. So took a couple of meetings. Basically, we started with the basis of what county went line by line and changed things that if you, Jackson County's procedures or processes are a little different, took took it out, edited what we need to. My big thing is if you're gonna have a policy, number one, you want to be compliant with all the standards, but number, the big thing is if you, if it's a practice you don't do, don't put it in the policy, then not do it. So if you're gonna have a policy, follow the policy. So we tried to make the policy reflect kind of what they're already doing. But there are some things that I wanted to bring to your attention that. That would be changes that would affect the budget, the secondary road budget. So one of the things we talked about at length was foot protection, safety toe shoes, basically. There was a survey conducted of counties back, I think, about two thousand seventeen. I think there was about thirty-nine responses about safety toe shoes, who who requires employees. Thirty-two out of the thirty-nine people that responded require, so about eighty-seven percent. So I talked to I of WCA, obviously, they recommend employees wear those where there's a hat. The issue comes for, we talked about this a lot in the safety committee meetings as well, guys are out plowed still, I'm sitting, we're in the dump truck, we're in the greater plow still, why do I have hips? Well, so let's say you break down or you need to pull another guy out of ditch or something, even if the hazard is something rolls on your foot or drops on your foot. Or your spinner breaks down, you gotta take it in the shop and work on it. It's just not efficient to go in there and say, well, oh, I have a potential foot hazard, I need to go put a different pair of shoes on. So bottom line is. I recommend that we put it in the policy, require employees to wear basically all the time. And they can be composite, they don't have to be still show, they just have to be the inside requirement for foot protection. And then the caveat to that is if you're gonna require employees to wear PPE, as important, you have to divide it or provide a site that they're repersonally. So. What's in the policy now, they're at policy, is two hundred and thirty dollars. That's for a pair of shoes, boots, doesn't need to be boots, could be shoes, it's all a different C and S. Like I said, then I know a lot of times, like for other counties, you know, if you buy a good pair of boots, it'll last more than a year. So then they can turn around and buy like, guys asked about buying the shirts that are, that comply, that look like they basically need the safety vest requirement, but that's in there. I think for this fiscal year, we got twenty, there's twenty thousand dollar budgeted for safety materials. That's six thousand dollars more than last year. Plus they just ended up buying a bunch of blue, like hard hat, traps, that kind of stuff. So a big chunk of of safety equipment costs is already been. Spent for last fiscal year. And then we're only, you're only spending about, I think, three hundred dollars every other month for the safety training, so budget wise, I don't think it'll be an issue. The policy. The major changes are the traffic best usage is a little bit changed, basically. If you're in the road right away, you need to have your safety vest on, whether the road is closed or not. So that was a discussion too, whatever, good culvert or bridge work, you don't have to have a safety vest on. My point was, well, if you're on a job site, there's guys moving equipment digging, you need to be visible to the guys working on the job site. So that was a, that was a change. There's a section in there on silicon dust that's a requirement by OSHA. Basically, if you saw concrete or asphalt, you need to use a wet saw or a wedge drill or have a shroud. So that's something that's, these are all things that are standards. The other one that's probably a bigger change is. So kind of we have a, we had an ocean citation for tree brush cutting guy, was in your, so the tree brush cutting is you, who could get a more up-to-date policy of that? So that was like verbatim from ours into yours. With a few tweaks as far as policy or the size of the tree that you guys will tackle, that kind of thing, but a lot of that stuff, for instance, you know, the guy fell in the tree, nobody else could be around him. No closer than two tree legs, the fall height of two trees, and that's, that's a standard. There's no debate about that. That's right out of the ocean standard. So there's, that's in there. The other thing I wanted to mention. I think the safety committee did a very thorough job. When I say we went through this line by line, we sat there and read through it line by line and made edits. The other thing is that the current safety section in your employee handbook. There's some conflicts now that exist, you know, in reference to. When you wear a hard hat, when you wear the safety vest and safety shoes. So moving forward. Either the employee handbook needs to reference this handbook or this handbook needs to reference the employee handbook saying one takes press of the over, because right now there's conflict between. So that just needs to get resolved forward, so.
So who, who is all on your safety committee that you, you don't have all the employees, so you have like the lead superintendent and.
Yeah, and the site person, Randy, yeah, and then Stacy's on there too, so she's in there.
And you had enough input from the employees off the road.
Well. And we don't have input from the other employees other than the people that are represented.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, to some of the guys there, like some of the things, the practices, I want to make sure the policy kind of follows what you're already doing, so whatever, you guys don't have to read, you know, completely do different, follow different policy, but. There are some things that you don't, I mean, you can comment about, but the bottom line is you have to follow the ocean standard. So your, well, your practices can be in conflict with ocean standards or, you know, safe practices. So as long as you're not breaking any ocean standard, you can kind of tweak how you perform or, you know? But if you've got an overhead hazard, you can't say, well, we don't want to wear hard hats. If you have an overhead hazard, you have to have order. I mean, you just can't avoid that kind of stuff.
It's sort of logical that they need to have protection, I think, I would have thought that would have been in our policy here. But as far as the allowance goes, did you say yearly then, even if? So. And not, somebody's gonna stockpile and shoes, much shoes, but you know, they can't use it for like, for protection, like you said, either reflective type shirts or something for that effect.
So we don't, in click category, we don't stipulate it has to be used for shoes. It's a safety allowance, and as long as, we use require receipts and all that, and it's really. It's.
It's easier just to give them the money.
We give them the check, and then the bottom line is when you show up to work, you better have safety boots on, because if you don't, you're violating.
That's what I mean by the points. Then forcing that side of it.
So you can kind of tell, like I can look at a person who isn't tell if it's, if it's, yeah, so, you know, especially, you know, there's, there are tennis shoes that, that are safety apparel shoes. Those are kind of hard to tell, but for the most part, you can tell, but the bottom line is if there's an injury, so you get backed over and you didn't have safety shoes on, not only are you gonna be troubled because you're probably not following proper procedure, but you weren't wearing the proper PPE. So now it becomes on the, the notice becomes on the employee to have the right. So everything's better by.
So we're covering.
Well, you would like, they, they, yeah, so guys, I mean, I get it, when guys talk about, well, steel toe shoes are water, get cold, and there's no doubt they do. But you can get the composites, don't pull the cold for bad, and then, you know, like I said to my guys, I'm like, your feet are really super cold, go in and warm up, you know, like.
They have to warm or things like that.
Yeah, so.
It's not out of line to require.
You know, if you're working outside where your feet would get cold, get really cold, then, you know, when you take a break, they'll warm them up, you know, you can wear boots over top of them too, they're, you know, get slithy boots, so. There's a lot of ways around that. I mean, for every situation, there's always a way you could probably find a solution around whatever.
There's always an excuse. It's always a cure.
Let's see, that cover all my notes here. So we, there'd be about thirty employees that would would get this. I took out county engineer, the office manager, the assistant. We debated about texts, but the texts do do sign work and that kind of thing, so. If they do, like when they're surveying, they're out using, you know, knives and stuff, cutting trees and doing that, so it. If they do, like when they're surveying, they're out using, you know, knives and stuff, cutting trees and doing that, so technically they would fall under that. So the thing is, if you, you get the stipend, and you better have safety shoes on, and don't, don't get hurt, not wear a safety shoes, don't hurt your feet, not wear safety shoes. Now, if you get in the site, then you better be aware, basically.
I like wearing a seatbelt. Ninety-nine or ten percent of the time you don't need it, but when something falls.
Uh, the other thing that's kind of nice that I'll actually be implementing quickly, uh, is this little uh. Appendix at the end, we went through this line by line, work item by work item. And this is really where we kind of, I think, did a lot of uh. Betting this process about what's where, so now an employee, you know, if they wanna know. If I'm gonna go out and cut brush, just torch, brag or site installation, it tells you what's required and what's optional. So. The last step I'll do, once, you know, we get to talking, this is, I'll send this probably to I M W C A, have them look at it. Just in case, because if there's ever an issue, that's, they're gonna say, well, let me see your policy, and I'm gonna send it to you now. So don't tell me you didn't get a chance to look at it in the W C A, so.
Is this something that they come up with, or you guys come up with, or the committee come up with as far as different jobs and what?
So this is a, I'm a big, big believer in don't recreate the wheels, we got this from I M W C A. And we added a bunch of things, it took out some things, because this is originally, I think, written for like a. Like a city, like dump, like a waste, like a, like a waste hauler or something like that, so. There was a lot of things in here that we didn't need, and then we added, you know, excavator, general site, we're bridging over tower and that kind of thing. It was set up more for like what I would say is city, so we took out some of that, so. And that was all by the committee, the safety.
So is this something that we have to approve, or is that just a part of the policy?
So this will be part of the policy, it will be approved separately, it'll be as one unit. Um, like I said, so this is just a work session, I will. I was gonna take any comments you guys had and then tweak this, and then I would send it to I M W C A, and then. I would not bring it back to you guys to approve until I have I F W C A's approval, so then, in my mind, it's ready, ready to go at that point.
Well, I, I mean, you're not gonna get a lot of feedback from me, I think the best information you're gonna get is from your, either from your employees or your committee or.
Yeah.
They're on board with it, everyone's doing their job. We aren't, they have to be on board and know they gotta comply, that's the bottom.
Well, and I think. I mean, I don't, I've had a lot of experience with the guys in the safety committee, but based on the discussion they had, they, in my mind, would be. Safety, safety advocates, people that, I think, and I tried to make this point, so it was like, you know. When you guys leave here, you're the ones that are probably gonna get the questions about, you know, what about this, or what about that, the safety policy. So what do we have, we have to. You know, we need to be together on this and say, this is why, why we're doing this, or why you need to do that, so. I mean, bottom line, there's gonna be people that. Don't think they need to wear safety shoes here, don't think they need to wear a safety vest when they're in the right of way, and the right of way is closed, but. That's not what policy says, and we're gonna follow policy.
I think that's great.
So the only other, I guess, question, if you guys, you know, you have comments, you can email me, but I'm gonna take this version instead of I M W C A. And then we just need to discuss, or I don't know, next year, what we wanna do. With the employee handbook versus this and the conflicts now that exist.
We'll just reference this.
Okay, that works. All right.
Yep, it's all on these.
Yes, we're ahead scheduled too.
Yeah.
Okay, Becky. So I think this is just a personal work session, I don't know if there's anything specific that needs to be discussed um today. It is my understanding that there's the wishes of the woman to go ahead and.
Well, yeah, we just need to narrow down a little bit. That's the discussion, we certainly need to do the delegates and.
Have you communicated at all with the two of the interview, I know you did the one.
Oh, yes.
Both of them did, yes, okay. Good. I would just say the, the new potential candidate, we just need to set up a time when we can interview them and. Move forward and see if we can. Come to some conclusion.
So are we looking for times or?
Well, yeah, I mean, he's from, he's had a little bit of a queue there, so I don't.
Yeah.
What the availability would be for days, nights.
Okay, so you just email us with.
Let me, let me.
Well, depending, if it's this week, it's all of us have a little, not a lot of commitments this week, so.
That's not true, I have a Mason guy coming.
We have somebody in the house working too, but that's not me. So.
I mean, there is, should be some guy available.
I would just see when they're available and see if we can. Work it out that we could. Accommodate this time.
We have a couple. Turned question to this later.
So maybe I'll get in contact.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be great.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the meeting today?